Yeah.
Yeah, I should be doing this question.
He just.
That breaks.
They always in healthy way.
No, I am not. I'm not going out by all my slack. I did that for wine left. See where that hit up.
It's also have that.
Don't want any words.
He uh.
Where I can.
I have nowhere to take them.
Did you see how?
I feel like. I just. Well, just talk about that.
Yeah. Finally, they'll be.
You're good over here.
And we. I realized like now when you check the door. Okay. So. That sounds. I talked about it. I realized the bottom. The bottom. Move. You know. Yep. That actually.
Really on here.
This mom take a live off. Change them up. That'll be. Like ninety bucks to buy a three switch. Four hundred bucks for a mo. You're the. Two hundred dollars. Not always something. This. Yeah. I even find YouTube video.
That is not dissimilar to.
Oh, Mary. It is very similar. She's. That's.
I work.
And I get more.
Yeah. That's everything.
I did. I did my job today and then I applied. I've been busy. And they were. They have. So I have. So. Get up there. Free competition. I framed. Way. So I actually put something. I mean. Unplug. Doors.
Right.
I mean, so. You know.
For some of you, just my. I suggest. You know. They will. Actually.
I don't want.
Realize.
No, sometimes why she's like.
My.
Scott's not. I tried to. No, no, no. I tried to.
Yeah. That's. It's.
Yeah. And I actually.
Yeah. Deeper time. You want.
No, not here. I'm here.
Yeah. She's.
Nice. I have this weird.
It's boring. I've been trying to. Like.
And hence.
And then.
Part of the comment.
For whatever reason, like your nature. This is. Like. But it's not like. You pay. And then also like.
He at the door in the light.
It'd be like punching.
Just go down.
In like. Deep work. And like. Very well. What do we do?
I got it. I got it.
Yes.
That is a nighttime.
Of course.
Evening, everyone. I will call the meeting to order at seven oh one. And if we could stand. But please. Good allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God and indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And welcome to our March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five committee. The whole meeting of the Board of Education. Ms. Griffin, can you do a roll call, please?
Megan Doyle.
Here.
Scott Fermander.
Mr. Fermander is absent.
Tracy Erby.
Here.
Tom Kova.
Here.
Lauren Mallor.
Here.
Christina Preett.
Here.
Adam Sobe.
Here.
Mike Smith.
Here.
Cindy Winkler.
Here.
And Susan Glenn.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. And Mr. Fermander is.
Okay. All right. So tonight we have some reporting, annual reporting to catch up on in some instances. Dr. Katia.
Yes, we're going to go straight to the Next Generation Accountability Report with Mr. Autery.
Thanks, Autery.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Glenn, members of the board. Great to see you all this evening. This is our annual update for the Next Generation Accountability Report, which is produced by the State Department of Ed annually. And tonight, my hope is to walk you through the twelve different indicators and also share some of the many successes that we saw as a school district coming into the two thousand twenty four, twenty five school year. Before we kick off, I want to introduce along the back row, they all sit together, members of the team who you'll see tonight. Much of this work would not be possible without. Sitting to closest to me, to my immediate left, is Dr. Andrew Deacon, who is our supervisor of student development and academic success. Next to Andrew is Dr. Kristi Ann Golewski, who is our supervisor of school climate. Next to Dr. Golewski is Sarah Brewer, who is our instructional supervisor of six twelve humanities. Next to Sarah is the future, soon to be, Dr. Amy Paris, who is our supervisor of arts, music, and media, pre-K to twelve. Next to Amy is Marissa Akompor, who is our instructional supervisor of equity and engagement. Next to Marissa is Therese McQuire, who is our instructional supervisor of early childhood. And sitting to her immediate left, I'm very happy to be the first to announce it publicly, is just as of Friday afternoon, Friday evening, Dr. Bethany Morrow, who is our supervisor of PK. So my hope tonight is to be able to showcase a lot of the work that this team has helped to lead and support throughout the district over the last twelve months. So as we talk about accountability, one of the things that I want to remind you is the accountability profile really matches what we try to do as a district. We talk so much about Milford measures. And we believe that there is no single test score that can ultimately predict student outcomes. That student achievement is really based on a combination of different metrics, different indicators that allow us to be able to look at more holistically and from a multi-factor perspective. And the Next Generation Accountability System is really comprised of twelve main indicators. However, what you're going to see tonight is the twelve indicators can actually be broken out to twenty-two different sub-indicators. So there are some that fall within this. And what you're going to notice, and I've organized this information a little bit differently on the next slide, is we can organize this into buckets. And if you think about it in buckets, the first one is really our academic success metrics. So that's things like student growth, student achievement on our core assessment measures, ELA, math, science. There's also testing participation that gets kind of lumped in there. Even though it doesn't have its own score, it can actually impact a district's overall accountability score. I'll talk a little more about that in a few moments. The green bucket is really our student attendance and looks at things like chronic absenteeism. And you'll notice for a lot of the metrics, one of the great things that's true about Next Generation Accountability is it allows us to get down to the subgroup level. So you're going to see that oftentimes these indicators present not only all students, but it also looks at what we call high needs population. And the high needs population is really comprised of three different subgroups. We have our multilingual learners. And I will tell you, as part of the multilingual learner category, the state actually does not include students who are deemed recent arrivals, meaning that they have come into the U.S. within the first two years since their arrival. So those students are typically not included in that multilingual learner category. Also, students who are economically disadvantaged, so are receiving free and reduced lunch. And then also our students with disabilities. So that particular high needs category comprises students in those three groups. The blue bucket gets into our college and career readiness benchmarks. Again, the whole intent of creating the Next Generation Accountability Profile was to help us be able to see what are the metrics that are important for ensuring that students are ready for college and career. So the CCR, basically indicators five through ten, look at things like graduation, on track to graduation, and also preparation for college and career readiness, whether that's through course attainment or testing. And then lastly, we mentioned that one of the pieces that holds true about the Accountability Index is we step outside of the traditional core academic measures. We also look at other subject areas that are not necessarily tested subject areas, things like physical education and the arts. So I want to get into a little bit on how to read this because it's important. And I know we gave you some pieces of information such as the overview video as well as the frequently asked question guide in your board packet for this evening. But I want to point out several different parts of the data set as you look at it. So the first one is the indicator, and that's the actual item which is being assessed. Next to the indicator, you'll notice that there's a column that says index or rate. And what I want you to notice is anything in number one, so number one is all of our particular academic indicators, ELA, math, and science. Those are listed as a performance index. And then you'll also notice that there's a slash rate. So basically, indicators two through twelve are represented as a rate or a percentage. The target. So back in two thousand fifteen, when Next Gen Accountability Profile was first communicated, this was in response to the legislation called the Every Student Succeeds Act or ESSA. And each state had to have an accountability index of some type to measure student progress. And this particular index allowed us to be able to see things linked to a particular growth target or target on the assessment. So you'll notice that every single indicator of the twelve has its own target value. What they do from there, the next column over, which you'll see as points earned, is they take that index or that rate and they prorate it based on the amount. And they assign at the state level a maximum number of points. So for instance, you'll notice for all of the number ones, all of the academic indicators, they give you a total max point out of fifty. So if you did the math out and you looked at the index divided by the target, it will give you the same points earned rate. So it's prorated based on that change from the seventy-five target, in this case, to the fifty-point max. So the last two columns are really the pieces that they use to determine not only our accountability index, but also the state. So the percentage of the points earned is if you take the points earned column and you divide it by the max points, that will give you the percent of the points earned for us as a district. And then obviously, as a comparison, we also provide the state average for the percentage of the points earned as well. So you can see the side by side with the overall state of Connecticut. So what I want to do is get into the actual twelve buckets now and talk about each of these particular items. So the first one is academic achievement. And one of the big pieces to take away from this is this is a one-time snapshot. So academic achievement looks at that particular grade level of students in that one moment of time, that one assessment in the spring. And we really have three that comprise this particular bucket. We have the Smarter Balance, which is in English, Language, Arts, and Mathematics, grades three through eight. We have the SAT, which is also in math and ELA in grade eleven. And then we have what's known as the Connecticut Alternate Assessment. And these are for a select population of special education students that qualify based on their IEP. And this is given in ELA, math, and science as well. So if you remember last year, one of the items that we had talked about during this presentation when I first came on board and was getting into my first presentation with all of you was we had a lot of areas academically where we had dipped. So if I had color coded same way last year, you would have probably seen a lot of red in the boxes. Well, one of the big successes that I want to share with you is we have seen some great gradual growth. We're seeing growth in the right direction. And what I want you to notice just overall is if we're looking at the academic achievement measures, that number one for both all students and high need students, we saw increases in just about every area. You'll notice that science for all students has not been color coded. And that's because statistically, we have stayed approximately the same as we were during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. I'll also point out to you, if you take a look at the final column, final two columns, looking at in bold, the percent of the points earned, you'll see that we exceed the state in every single one of those particular indicators. So we continue to exceed and achieve higher than the state level. When we get into English proficiency, which this is another one that we are going to add on here, is this is based on our state multilingual learner proficiency assessment. It's called the Lost Links. And the Lost Links measures on four different areas: speaking, listening, reading, and writing. And then what the state does is they take the speaking, listening, reading, and writing, and they organize it into two buckets, the literacy and the oral buckets. So on the next slide, you'll actually see those particular scores broken out. So when we look at growth, and if you think back to the fall, when we did the student achievement presentation, I had shared with you not only our academic achievement scores, but also our student growth scores. And student growth is looking at the same cohort of kids with multiple assessment points. So we're looking at how that same group of kids has grown over time. And if you take a look here, other than for the multilingual learners in two F, on the oral assessment, we again saw growth from the prior year in each of these areas. And again, still exceeding the state average. I mentioned to you, as part of that first bucket, we also take into account the assessment participation rate. And it is the expectation of the State Board of Ed that ninety-five percent of our students or higher are sitting for and participating in our spring summative assessments. This includes not only all students, but also the high needs group as well. And I'm happy to tell you that overall, if you take a look at our assessment participation rate, on average, ninety-seven percent of our students sat and attempted slash completed the spring summative assessment across the three main tested areas, ELA, math, and science. If we go into the next bucket, which is our chronic absenteeism, again, just to kind of define this out for you, chronic absenteeism is students missing ten percent or greater of the total days across the school year. So if you're in school for hundred and eighty days, eighteen days or more is considered chronically absent. And this includes all attendance areas, whether it's excused, unexcused, disciplinary, the mental health days, all of that is included within that bucket. So it's for any reason. And the state puts out a target of less than five percent for districts as a chronic absenteeism rate as a target. So this is one of the items that, as a state, we saw massive increases in after the pandemic and even during the pandemic. So as a state, as a district, we're still continuing to work on bringing these numbers down. So you'll notice if you take a look at the index or the rate in the first column, for all students, we are fifteen point one percent. And for high need students, twenty-two point six percent. So you may be asking, how does that compare statewide? Well, I'll tell you, for all students, it's seventeen point seven percent at the state level. And the high needs is twenty-five point five, I believe was the. Twenty-five, twenty-five percent for high need students. So we are still falling below the state average when it comes to chronic absenteeism. So obviously, there's still work there for us to be done. I will, you know, recognize the work of the team this year. One of our big goals, along with Ms. Stewart's office, was around belonging and thinking about high expectations for all learners and building that in as part of our high-quality instruction work. So we continue to think about ways to make sure that students experience that belonging within school. We know that when students feel like they belong, attendance is likely to also follow as well. The next particular bucket, the third of the four buckets, deals with preparation for college and career readiness. And when we talk about this particular bucket, we're looking at a few different options here. We're looking at students that participate in two courses in advanced placement, two courses in one of the seventeen state CTE clusters or categories, and two workplace experience courses or an internship in any particular area. So any one of these three bullet points would work on satisfying that CCR requirement. And specifically, this is looking at students in grades eleven and twelve. So as we get into this, I will tell you that Milford follows seven of the state-level career clusters, which we have utilized to create our career pathways. So when we've shared with you before, a lot of the career pathways, and we are every year expanding new ones into the mix. We currently have seven career pathways for next school year, which correspond to the seven state career clusters. Everything from computer science to entrepreneurship and management, finance, and wood technology is some of the big ones. So indicator number five looks at the percent of students who are taking courses. So we mentioned a few seconds ago, whether that's AP courses or any type of an internship course. We don't do anything with IB or International Baccalaureate here. But you could see that we actually exceed the target. So the target statewide is seventy-five percent. We're at ninety point three percent. So that's why we earn one hundred percent of the points in that particular category. We're working on the percent who are passing the exam. So you'll notice indicator number six, which we fell at a rate of about forty-eight percent that are meeting that CCR requirement through testing measurement. So obviously, we are continuing to think about ways to build in ECE as an opportunity for students in courses. This team behind me has done a lot of work. Ms. Brewer, Ms. Paris, Ms. Swanson, when she was in her role here as the STEM supervisor, did a lot of work at looking at concurrent enrollment and ways to continue to build opportunities for students to get that ECE credit as part of those two courses in the AP slash ECE. Graduation. So there's a few different items that fall in the graduation bucket. So when we talk about graduation, we're talking about on track being one of the major pieces. And that is specific to students in grade nine. So students who are earning at least five credits in their freshman year is considered on track to graduation. And we know that there is a significant correlation to students who are on track to graduation with actually graduating from high school within the four-year time period. We'll also look at four-year graduation, which obviously, as it is, is students who graduate from high school four years or less. The six-year graduation rate was designed to accommodate students who may have to work part-time outside of school, which creates an opportunity where they are missing time within school. We talked about the multilingual learners earlier as well. And also, students who are in our transitional programs, who are our students with disabilities, all fall within that six-year graduation metric. And then post-secondary entrance looks at the year after high school graduation, the percentage of students that are enrolling in either a two-year or a four-year program, college program. And the state has admitted that there is significant limitations to the post-secondary entrance in the fact that it's looking only at college entry. It's not looking at apprenticeships. It's not looking at students who gain employment right out of high school. It's not looking for students who enter the military. So there's a lot of other options there that are not included within that metric. So again, if you take a look at our numbers here, eighty-eight point nine percent, so we're earning about ninety-five percent of the points for on-track high school graduation. The four-year graduation rate is at ninety-one point four percent, earning us about ninety-seven percent of the total points. The six-year graduation rate, which looks back to the two thousand twenty-one cohort, that would be the students that would have, at this point, completed the six years that we would be able to look at their data, ninety-five point seven. And then the post-secondary entrance is seventy-three point six percent. And the target there is seventy-five. So that gives us a total of the ninety-eight percent of the points earned. And then if we go into the last bucket, which is the physical education and arts access, we again want to make sure that we're including a lot of the parameters that are not academic tested. And if we start with the CPFA, the CPFA has been given since nineteen ninety, and it really looks at a series of physical fitness test measures, cardiovascular fitness, flexibility, muscular strength across four different test measures. And they assign students a health fitness score. And in order to meet on the CPFA, you need to fit in either the health fitness zone or the high fitness zone for each of the four tested areas. And students take the exam in grades four, six, and eight, and also one time in high school. Arts access looks at students in grades nine through twelve that participate each year in at least one dance, theater, music, visual arts course over time. And our work, Ms. Paris, has worked extensively to provide additional opportunities to entice our students to follow their passion when it comes to music and art, whether it's participation AP Studio Art, a lot of the music festivals. Amy does a terrific job networking at the state level to get our students involved in a variety of opportunities, whether it be CMEA, National Association for Music Education, Allstate. This year, she actually went and attended a middle school level music competition to be able to see what that entailed, to see if it would be worth our students participating in next year. So we're looking for opportunities to get students excited about and participated in the visual arts and performing arts in district. So when we talk about our physical fitness, I do want to point out that Dr. Golewski and Mr. Shawn Smith, when he was here last year, did extensive work. This was an area that was a significant weakness for us. And they did work in terms of calibrating scoring with staff. We actually dug in and worked with building administrators to make sure that participation rates were good, tracking students that needed to complete the assessment, and just thinking about the overall, there's a lot of subjectivity when giving the CPFA that is sometimes left to teacher interpretation because the teachers, again, are assessing and making sure that scoring is done consistently. So we did have some substantial growth in that category, and I'll highlight that in a few moments. And then arts access, we continue, as I mentioned to you, to provide opportunities for students, real-world, experience-wise, to get our kids excited about the study of music and art. So if we take our accountability index as a whole and we were to average together, just like you would if you were going to do grades for a kid in a class, you would take all of their scores on all the individual assignments and average them together. This particular graph does show twenty eighteen, nineteen, and if you remember, nineteen, twenty, and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one were impacted due to COVID. Those were our COVID years. Seems like so long ago. But you'll notice that we were in essentially a three-year decline. And this past year, from twenty-two to twenty-three, we had a three percent growth in our overall accountability index. And the states saw just about a one percent, just over a one percent increase. So even in terms of our growth rate on the accountability index profile, we saw more growth than the state did. I also want to point out to you, as I mentioned to you a little while ago, that assessment rates, participation rates, don't add in as a score. But if a district doesn't meet the accountability rates in terms of assessment participation, it can actually bring schools down a category. Same thing with the index gap. And what this does is it looks at the difference between all students and the high needs group. So what they do is they take the performance, the mean performance, and they add a standard deviation to it. So they look at that. So they look at that variance. And if a district exceeds the mean plus one standard deviation, they do take away points. It does negatively impact your overall accountability score. And they look at this in terms of ELA and math performance between all students and high-needs, but then also the graduation rate. So if we take a look again, we do not have any outliers. If you specifically look at the third column in, which says size of the gap, that's our difference in district between high-needs and non-high-needs students. And then the fourth column actually shows the state's mean plus the one standard deviation. So since we fall below the sixteen point nine, the eighteen point two, the seventeen point nine, et cetera, that's why we are not considered as an outlier for any of the performance between our high-needs and our non-high-needs groups. So I want to get into the commendations. And there's a lot of them. We are really excited and very proud of the fact that we not only had one school of distinction in the district this past year, but we had two. And as far back as I can track, which is the seventeen, eighteen school year that's publicized online, we've never had two schools in the same year of those years that have been a school of distinction. So I do want to recognize the team at Orange Avenue and the team at Pumpkin Delight. Mr. McNeil at Pumpkin and his team had high growth in ELA for all students. And Mr. Appicella and his team at Orange Avenue had high growth not only in ELA, but also in mathematics. So I thank the team behind me, especially Ms. McGuire, Ms. Dr. Morrow now, for their work in supporting curriculum. Ms. McGuire has done a great job at networking with Mr. Wakeman this year, as well as Dr. Morrow, to really make sure that we're supporting kids with the curriculum connections early childhood and pre-K and K. And the collaborative effort has really helped to grow and sustain that in terms of literacy. And I'm excited because we are, as you know, this is our soft launch this year for our core literacy program, the shared reading experiences. It's going to be outstanding now to see our phonics, our phonological awareness program, and our core reading program all come together, what implications that has for our students moving forward. So that's a huge shout-out to Dr. Morrow for all of the work she's done with instructional coaches and teacher teams to really provide those supports and consistency across all of the buildings. And I do want to point out some of the other successes of this team. We had six percent jump from last year in students who demonstrated college and career readiness through AP exams. So again, this team continues, the secondary level, to work with our educators and refining our AP curriculum to make sure that it's rigorous, but also that we're providing students with the experiences that they need to be successful on those courses. As both myself and Dr. Katia presented to you throughout the year, I think at the, you know, back-to-school presentation, as well as the assessment presentation, we had one hundred and seventy-four students across the high schools named as AP scholars at a variety of levels. And that was actually an increase of thirty-four more students from the prior school year. Dr. Gilleski, I couldn't thank enough for her work. We saw an eight percent growth for all of our students and their physical fitness achievement scores. And that was one that had been a major working point for us. Talking specifically about Ms. Brewer and Dr. Morrow, seven and a half percent average ELA growth for all students. So talking about growth, we're not just talking about a one-year snapshot. We're talking about that growth of students longitudinally over time. So again, we're showing that our students are, curriculum is starting to take place, and it's creating those opportunities for growth. The fantastic soon-to-be Dr. Paris, fourth year in a row that we've been named a Best Community for Music Education Award. And that goes through all of the opportunities and the successes that our students have had across the school year. And then obviously, one that has been a major piece for our team's work over time, Dr. Nobley, Mr. Wakeman this year, five point seven percent gain in math growth for all students. So we're starting to really see those growth scores rise. We're continuing to be intentional about how we look at data with our educators in district and starting to really think about opportunities to support assessment. In the board packet, we also provided you with the profile and performance report as we do every year. This particular report includes a much more in-depth overview of several of our indicators, everything from instructional resource allocation, a lot of the performance indices that I shared with you tonight. And also, towards the end, there is a narrative section, which looks at three important areas for resource allocation, reducing economic and racial disparities in district, and also school improvement and parental outreach activities. So I encourage you to take a look at that at your leisure. And with that being said, thank you for allowing me to be able to share the data with you tonight, share the presentation with you. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Artiery. Do we have questions? Questions?
I have a couple.
Sure.
So, if I can find them. On the art access, maybe, I ask this every year, and I always
Yeah.
directly answer. So we have, I always consider that we have a lot of, we have a lot of offerings for art. So I'm always kind of perplexed why it's only fifty percent. We kind of stay there every year. But there's a weird, I think there's a weird measurement in here that kind of accounts for it. So it's supposed to be, um, I'm trying to find what it said. One, let's see.
One course.
Nine, twelve, at least one, one dance. So is it one per year, like every student doing one per year? Or is it just one course throughout their four years in high school?
Correct. It's done per year. So it's one, at least one course in grades nine through twelve during that school year.
Each year.
Each year. So they reassess it.
Student taking four courses throughout their high school career. Okay.
And the other piece to it too, Ms. Glennon, is there are certain courses which districts may deem as art courses, graphic design being one of them, photography, which some districts offer as an art course,
But the state does.
which may not necessarily fall into the buckets of a course that is linked in as part of that.
Okay. I also, so I found kind of interesting the, a little bit of a dip in the on-track, I'm sorry, the post-secondary entrance. And I know, you know, I think nationally, there is a bit of flux amongst kids, whether they need to go to college or not, you know, whether it's worth it. So I'm just wondering what, if we have any data on what might have contributed to that little, it's not a big dip, but a little bit of a dip.
Nothing specific at this particular point. Obviously, that's data that, you know, we can look into with the school counselors. But, you know, if I had to hypothesize, I think it's opportunities, again, for students that want to enter into apprenticeships, go into some of the trades, which not necessarily are going to factor into the two-year, four-year college numbers that go into that value. But it would be, it would be interesting, especially as we continue to develop our student success plans, look at how we incorporate that data into our Naviance program, to actually be able to see where our students are going post-secondary.
And then the last one, so in terms of two F, the progress towards English proficiency oral, there was a five-point dip there. So can you explain what that measured, like how do they measure that? Is it literally a oral?
Yeah. So the loss links, as I mentioned to you, is for subtests. And the speaking and listening, the speaking is literally, the student has a headset on. It will give them a prompt, like it will ask them a question, or it will show them a picture and say, tell me a story about what the boy and girl are doing. And the student literally has to speak the particular sentence out. Or it will give them a prompt, or like a teacher giving directions, and then they have to pick what the teacher asked the student to do. So those particular items go into that oral component. So a lot of that is speaking. It looks at number of words per sentence. It looks at coherence between the words in terms of making a phrase or a complete sentence. And that goes into that oral section. The reading and writing component fall into that literacy score. So that's being able to articulate a full sentence with appropriate punctuation and endpoint, capital letter at the beginning of the sentence, that type of piece goes into that.
And then I had one more. The preparation for college and career readiness. So based on a percentage of students in grades eleven and twelve participating in at least one of the following during high school, so are they only looking at kids in grades eleven and twelve, but they might have taken courses earlier than that? Or is it just the courses that they've taken in grades eleven and twelve?
Only in grades eleven and twelve for that particular metric.
And I'm, I'm assuming that when we do, when, when kids do start on a, if they're starting the career pathway, they, they potentially begin that in ninth grade, correct? There are courses they can take in ninth grade that would?
Correct. So the team, when they build the career pathways, articulates out not only the core courses, but also the courses that are unique to. So if it's government and public service, there's courses that correspond in terms of electives and social studies that would fall within that particular course pathway. Same thing with finance or marketing. The business courses would comprise, in addition to the English and math and social studies and science.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else have questions?
Ms. Doyle?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll go back to the arts and physical education access. Do we have dancer theater classes that are part of our arts access?
We do not. Ms. Paris and I have talked about one of our future dreams and hopes would be to be able to expand out our arts pathways. We currently have a visual arts pathway that's in the production pipeline now. But we've talked about like hope and dream in the future, would be able to have like theater for students that are interested in the performing arts as well.
That makes sense because we have spent so much time on music, but there's some of the other conversations we've had, it's in there. On the six-year graduation rate, you mentioned that students may need to work outside of school, multilingual, learn our students in transitional program. Is that tracked through GED, or how is that tracked in terms of that?
No, it's, it's students that participate through schooling. And obviously, their demographics are communicated through our data system. So the state's aware of students that are participating in like our transitional program here in district. And that would put those students on that six-year graduation pathway.
Okay. Let me put my other question. Dr. Gilleski, we, one of the things I heard, I think I heard, was that we created cohesiveness across the district, which demonstrated why our fitness program was able to have some better success, was essentially that you had multiple teachers who all used a different assessment at times. So not different assessment, but they looked at different, like
Yeah, I want to be careful not to go down the avenue of that it was being done differently across schools.
Not done differently.
But I think just assessment literacy and developing that with educators and, you know, making sure that there is, educators understand what the assessment's asking for kids to do. How do we, through our PE curriculum, intentionally support students in developing those skills? So when they are assessed, and the assessment will happen throughout the year based on when students are taking their PE classes. So it could be late fall, it could be late spring, especially if you're thinking about the, you know, middle-school, elementary-school level, it could be throughout the year. So it was really making sure that if there was any question of what we're looking for on the assessment, that we helped to address that. But, you know, our educators have been doing it long enough, but I think it was just an opportunity to make sure that we are following up on students that, for whatever reason, absence, illness, missed the assessment when it was given, making sure we come back around on that, working with principals to make sure that, that that was happening at the school level. So I think Dr. Gilleski's work was really in support of making sure that those conversations were happening.
Is this too much of a leap to say that's like our student, our coaching with students is similar, that we're paying attention to what's going on with students and teachers and seeing where we could make strides and?
Yeah, we always want to be responsive to where students are at. So, you know, I think it's, it's in anything we do, is that we're looking at our outcomes and using that either right now in the moment to make changes, or if it's something that is more of a large-scale curriculum change, the team is having those discussions in the late spring, starting to think about curriculum work for the summer and going into the fall. So the nice thing is, we're starting to get the assessment results a little bit sooner every year. So we're getting to see some of the initial data before the school year really wraps up, where before, we wouldn't get until early September. So it's giving us a little bit of a jumpstart in terms of thinking about our successes, but our opportunities for growth.
Thank you. One more. The five percent goal for chronic absenteeism seems a little pie in the sky.
Well, at one point before the pandemic, you know, and I think now, and I don't want to put it, you know, solely on the pandemic, we're seeing now, and Dr. Katia and I, on Thursday, were at a really impactful presentation by the author of the book Anxious Generation. And there were a lot of statistics that were presented about the mental health challenges that our youth are facing these days, and how superintendents, how school districts need to start to think about some of those challenges. So I think some of it is, is obviously relational to the pandemic. There's also elements of mental health that are happening to our students in school, out of school. So we're going to continue to be responsive. We're fortunate that we have a supervisor for school climate who is, is really helping us to think about that work, both at the district level and at the school level. And we'll continue, whether it's through the PPS department supervisor of school climate, to engage in that work, to see how we can make sure that students feel connected to and belong in school.
We can see that there's already great growth in time since the pandemic and that we've been really been tracking this information. Is the state supporting any of that work with funding or any of that kind of space?
I wouldn't say necessarily funding. They've done some, a variety of professional development opportunities, you know, almost like a affinity group that was called Talk Tuesdays, which was designed to have some districts present best practices around supporting attendance in schools. So I think they're trying, we're pertinent, to provide those opportunities to school districts. I don't, I'm not aware of the current time of anything funding-wise.
Okay. And then just really happy to see all the growth that we've continued over the last few years. And that says we're on the right direction.
Yeah. I mean, it's, the team is really fine-tuned. Dr. Katia's vision for the, the direction of the district. I think it's, there's a really clear focus and direction on where we want to go for supporting students. So I'm excited about this year. I am confident in this year in terms of our student performance. So I'm excited to be able to stand in front of you again next, next year at the same time and hopefully give you some more green room there.
That'd be great.
It feels like such a lifetime ago. The pandemic feels like it's forever ago, and I keep having to remind myself
Five years ago.
It's only, well, but this is the third, only the third year that we've been back to normal schooling. So it just, the timing is crazy. Any other questions, Ms. Morrow?
Fun fact, with the five years ago, if you look at the SBA, the ones who started it in third are now the ones finishing it in eights. So you've got a really solid dataset of trend line right there for the, for that particular cohort moving through. Can you remind me what the distinction is between the academic growth measurements and the performance index?
When you say, so academic growth is assessed on a rate, so it's a percentage. So what academic growth looks at is, if you remember on SBA, so let's take ELA. Student takes it in third grade. In fourth grade, the state assigns and says to that particular student on an individual level, you're going to make this many points of growth, whether it's twenty-eight points of growth, thirty-six points of growth. In fourth grade, the student takes the assessment a year later and only gets, let's say it was forty, they only get twenty points of growth. Therefore, they did not demonstrate their growth. They didn't grow to the level that the state had predicted that they would. And if you remember, we take it a step further. We also look at the percent of the target achieved. So it's not necessarily a yes and a no. Yes, they made the growth, or no, they didn't. They'll take that number and figure out, so if it was twenty and they were supposed to be forty, they actually made be 40, they actually made 50% of their growth. So it gives districts another layer of data to take a look at, not only did they reach their growth target or not, but how much of the growth target was met.
Okay, so this is the collective, all the individual growth targets that were set individually for all the students?
Correct. It's looking at, whenever you see growth, multiple points over time.
Okay. Is there, I'm looking at the current numbers, the current year and then the pre-COVID year as sort of our, as we built back up to where we were back in the day. Not even going to use the normal word, but back then, there seemed to be a lot of really great numbers coming through on the academic growth targets for math. We're surpassing where those numbers were in the pre-COVID numbers. But when we look at the performance index, we're not. We're still below. So I'm trying to put real words, small ones, around that distinction and what that tells us. Because I know there's been a lot of very targeted, very specific work being done in the math area and those numbers are coming through. And I'm wondering, is the growth variable, is the growth count on here something that is leading and then we would expect the performance index to catch up on that later? Is that sort of the distinction between those two measurements?
Well, I think the growth piece is we're starting to talk about the vertical progression of content. So what students learn third to fourth grade and that's getting stronger. We're also taking a look at each grade level. I think some of the work, especially that Mr. Wakeman has done this year, is starting to build out our suite of assessments to be able to see where students are and have some of that data to be back in front of teachers to really think about instruction in the moment. So we're continuing to think about those, the assessment strategies as well, but we're also starting to take a look at how teachers approach the content. You know, what are the strategies that they use to teach kids how to multiply, divide? You know, so there's, there's an element of how instructions delivered. There's also the content piece as well. And I think we're working to be really strong in both.
Okay. Is it accurate to say that the growth piece, as you were talking about it being vertical, that clicked a little bit more for me, where the growth piece is we're looking at how individual students at the moment, grade to grade, are significantly trending up beyond where they were before?
So that's the achievement, right? If you're looking at the one-year snapshot, that's the achievement. The growth is now looking at those same students as they go through grades three to eight.
Right. So if we're looking at the performance this year versus this year for this year, we're not quite at that same performance level, but it's trending in the right direction. It's moving up the way we want it to. But the growth piece, how much individual kids are actually being expected to and achieving year over year, that piece is significantly improving. That piece is significantly getting higher. So we would expect that over the next couple of years to be reflected in the performance index trend numbers as well as those same kids continue, hopefully, on those same trends.
And that's the important one, Ms. Mahler.
I can't tell if you're agreeing with me or just being very polite. So hopefully you're agreeing with me.
Yeah.
Because that does make sense in my head.
So to?
As a good thing for what we're doing in the math area.
To affirm your, your statement there.
Yeah.
Yes. The, the important one is the growth, as we're looking at how students are building on their own skills. The achievement is tough because that's an apples to oranges. You've got a different group of kids.
Yep.
Sitting in that fourth grade classroom each year. And obviously they come in with a certain, a certain set of prerequisite skills. That may not have been the same before, the students the year before.
Right, but they're learning the same apples every year in that fourth grade class. So theoretically, the test scores are measuring the same content that they're supposed to be learning each year. So we, it's good to see that growing and I would expect to have very positive results to see that continuing to grow since the individual kids are doing such, achieving such great numbers year over year, according to the growth rates. And I would expect, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, that given everything you were talking about, all the varying pieces of the ELA curriculum and all the different programs that are being implemented and have been implemented and are starting to pay off now, we will start to see similar numbers to that on the ELA side for both growth and then the following indicator of performance as well.
I would tend to think so.
Not to set the bar super high for the next couple of years or anything, but that to me seems to be the expectation that you're setting with what you're doing. No pressure.
No pressure.
Any questions on this side? Anybody else?
Little question.
I'm excited. Yes, Mr. Rupi?
One of the science index, why is that one blank?
In terms of the shading in. So that's, if you're looking at the picture that has all of the descriptions, the picture's an older picture. So years back, when this NGSS assessment first launched, they weren't necessarily looking at high needs at that particular point. So the first year, there was only, it was more of an incomplete dataset. So if you look at the slides for indicator number one, you'll see it for, for all of those particular items.
And also, I did want to point something out. I wanted to, where is it now? On the slide, next generation accountability 101. So I just want to verify, these are not Milford scores on that.
Those are not Milford scores, no.
Representative scores, no.
This was a snapshot I took of one of their publications.
Right, okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I just wanted to, I, I knew that they weren't, but I just wanted to point if you see that. Anybody else?
Can I clarify?
Sure.
My point, in looking at, it's highlighting specifically the math comparative with the growth and performance numbers and how they're significant in achieving, did not want to overlook or downplay the fact that the growth numbers on ELA took significant leaps from last year or the year before to last year, however we're measuring, from the last measurement to the one we have now, the newest one. They also took very significant leaps, even though they may not be back to where they were at the time. They are also quite impressive to have jumped the percentages that they did. So also very excited to see that the numbers are finally starting to reflect the work that we have been hearing about for a while, which is something that I know is a very important point across the board for a lot of people, myself included, data all the way. But it's nice to see those intangible efforts finally being reflected in something that we can point to and say, look, this went up and this is a good thing and it's moving that way. And because it's moving that way, we expect to see it continue moving over the next couple of years. So please keep doing what you're doing and yeah, don't take a foot off the gas.
Anybody else?
Sorry, can I have a clarifying question?
Yep.
Based on Ms. Mahler's point, write to read. When did we pilot the programs? Were they in the fall or last spring? I can't remember.
We piloted in the fall.
Okay. And then we adopted.
And then we did a adoption, you know?
Mid-fall.
Mid, late, we'll call it late fall. And then that's given us time to transition to our soft launch, which was February, early February, we got into the shared reading, which, where we have soft launched. And as we've done our Let's Connect as a central office team, we've heard great feedback from educators about their comfort with and the success it's having with kids in the classrooms, so.
Thank you. Do you as a district, as a team, get together with, say, Orange Ave and Pumpkin and, and share what they might be doing in their?
We did. Dr. Katia and I actually surprised them at a faculty meeting and presented them with a district certificate in front of all of their staff. So Mr. Appicella and Mr. McNeil had no idea we were coming. I think we made Mr. McNeil very nervous.
I'm sure they loved it.
All of a sudden, they were, they were sitting in his office and he's like, what are you holding? We're like, don't worry about it.
Why are you here?
Yeah, but it was, it was amazing to see the staff and let them know how proud of them we are.
Do you kind of dissect the work that they've done to see how that might be shared across district to increase?
That is, that is the work of our supervisor team, on the ground every day of the week in schools, working with principals, talking about commonalities in practice and having some of those best practice conversations, especially during our, our visioning meetings, talking about that and expanding that work across all eight of our elementary schools in that case.
Thank you. No other questions?
Great, thank you so much. Thank you to our instructional supervisor team. Appreciate your work each and every day.
This is probably my favorite report of all year.
So we know you guys probably have homework and you should go home and do that. And safe travels in the rain.
Thank you.
And they're trending in the right, they are. They always report that, but now they're trending in the right direction.
Thank you. It is hot. I wore, I was so cold at home. Yes. It was so dreary and ding. Sorry, we're saying how hot it is in here.
I had the window open before, I don't know how it got closed. Should be open.
This is now my favorite part of me. Just watching the bowl.
Did you set leave it open?
She's got to push harder.
I tried, yeah.
If he wasn't resenting, I think he would continue.
He wasn't responsible for what happens when it breaks.
Yeah, true. It would not be good.
All right, thank you. Proceed.
Thank you. Ms. Glennon, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to present our annual athletics financial report this evening. This is the report for the 2023-2024 school year. Before we begin, I want to take a moment and just recognize the presence of our athletic directors in the audience and thank them for being here. So in attendance, we have Mr. Jeff Rayusi, the athletic director at Joseph, uh, Joseph Bay Foreign High School, and Mr. Tom Drew, the athletic director at Jonathan Law High School. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. So this next slide here talks a little bit about the background of our athletics program. Just another quick reminder, this is for the 23-24 school year. So some changes that we have recently encountered won't be reflected in this report. So as of right now, we have 24 inter-scholastic sports and you will notice that that is not a reflection of the addition of esports and the cheerleading teams that were recently recommended by the CIAAC and added. So in next year's report, you will see that 24 number go to 20 steps. MPS is a member of the Southern Connecticut Conference, otherwise known as the SCC. And we also provide other sports, other activities as well as our unified sports and power programming. This part on the right represents all the members of the different districts that are members of the SCC. So a quick mention about unified sports. This is a registered program of the Special Olympics. We partner with students, student athletes, with and without special needs for training and competition. It runs throughout the school year, both the high school and the middle school. There's competition in soccer, basketball, volleyball, softball, wiffle ball and bowling. And we have approximately 50 to 55 students participate. That's, that fluctuates throughout the year depending upon the season. But I just wanted to quickly mention about our unified sports program and how great that is and what a great opportunity it is. This next slide starts talking about the finances specifically. So there's really two sources where we have funding for our athletics program. That comes from the general fund, which is the money that is supplied through the board, and the athletic activities account, which covers the supplemental pieces of that. Both funds are carefully monitored and all subject to our regular annual audits. So everything is audited on a regular basis. When we look specifically at the general fund, so the money that we actually budget for in our budget each year, these cover items that are typically around coaches' salary, transportation, athletic trainers, insurance, equipment and supplies in uniforms. So those are the typical items that we would see coming out of our general fund. And when we take a look at how we break that down, so this breaks it down by account code. If you look specifically, you can see how, how much we're spending on each individual item total for like transportation, coaches, trainers, each school. And then we break out specifically the hockey programs. So we have the hockey co-op boys, which is specifically listed there, and the hockey co-op for the girls. Each one of those gives a total general fund expenditure of approximately $1.3 million. Then we also have our athletic activities account. So that's the other way, so we have the general fund, which is by board, and then the athletic activity account, which helps offset some of those game day expenses. These, these dollars are attributed to mainly the ticket sales at the athletic event. So the money that we receive from that, that's the revenue, we use to offset the cost of those programs. And those, that money, we use that for game, game day officials, part-time staff, those are the ticket takers, score keepers, clocks. Mr. Rayusi and Mr. Drew could tell you the number of staff that it takes to run any one of these programs. So all those different pieces of that actual game day operations comes from those ticket sales. And this also includes police officers, ambulance and medical. On this next slide here, this, this talks about all the different revenue types we have for our programs here. And it also includes gate receipts because that's the majority of this. So ticket sales is a large portion of that. Tournaments and special events have a small number in there. Those could be something like a CIAAC sponsored event that's held at the school, which also includes our students. So there could be fees that are generated from that that we receive as revenue. There's also the hockey participation fees. Those are not for our students, those are the flat tech students that participate with us. And the donations, rebates and royalties, and then also game day operations from general funds. So that portion down at the bottom there, that $8,000, is a portion from our general funds that we attribute to offset that. So ticket sales for 23-24, this is a variable source of revenue. It's not something that we can necessarily count on and there's so many different factors that go into it that could affect it. Could be anything from, oh, it's a rainy day, I don't want to be sitting outside. It could be the opponent matchup isn't something that would draw a crowd or a larger crowd, team record. There's a number of factors that go into what kind of attendance would be at that game for each one of the games. And regardless of what attendance we have at those games, we still need to provide all those different pieces for the game day operation, police, ticket takers, people doing the clock. So it's all those different pieces that we still have to do no matter what. So it's, it's ticket sales are something that we can't necessarily rely on from year to year. And then I think another important mention here is that the cost of these game, game day operations have continued to rise. So cost of police, ambulance, wages in general continue to rise. So these are all things that put additional layers onto our budget here. Looking at gate receipt history, you can tell it's fairly stable here over time. So we have a number of years there. Obviously, that 2021 year was a COVID year where we didn't have students and parents at the game. So that was a, we'll call that an anomaly year, but if you look at the other years, there's a relatively steady average with these two recent years increasing slightly. That 22-23 year, I think that was the year that we had a number of teams go to postseason sports. So ticket sales would increase as team, a number of teams go to postseason. So that year was a, both, both schools had a number of teams that were in, late in the competition, so resulting in additional funding for the gate receipts. This next slide here breaks it down a little bit further into the ticket sales by school for each one of those sports. So as you'll see, there's, there could be a varying number of sales at each one of those schools. And like we mentioned before, this could be based on team record, some of those, some of those contributing factors that we talked about before as to why one, one school, it's not apples to apples where one school is going to get something very similar to the other. It's, it's really team dependent. But that breaks down the total ticket sales. This next slide here talks about our expenditures and it breaks it down by category once again. So it's just a different way of looking at some of that data for you. We have coaches, transportation, officials, refs. There's also a special note that I want to mention here. The ones that have the asterisks on it are the ones that are paid out of the athletic And this next slide here talks a little bit about student participation and it breaks it down by sport. So we have our fall, winter and spring seasons. And then we break it down by each one of the sports we have during that season and how many students participated. These are combined totals from both schools. So we have, so for football, we had 139 students last year as a combined total from foreign and law. and law, and so forth with the rest of these. There's a note down there that the asterisk represents teams that are co-ops, which are both of our boys hockey and our girls hockey are co-op teams. And we'll talk a little bit further about those co-op teams in a couple of slides. I also just wanted to make another quick note about this, that these are not necessarily unique users, so you wouldn't add up fall, winter, and spring to get a total number of students participating in sports because there may be some students that participate in multiple seasons. This next slide breaks down the expenses by sport. So if you take a look at each one of the sports that we offer, this shows how much money it costs to run that program with all the different pieces, transportation, coaches, supplies, all those different pieces gives you a total amount that each sport costs to run. And as you can see, some sports have much more expensive to run as a result of equipment, the number of staff you would need at a game. Like a football game requires a certain number of police officers and medical with ambulances. So not all sports need an ambulance on the game day. So those kind of costs definitely drive up the cost of a certain sport. It's something to kind of keep in mind when you look at some of those. And once again, these are the combined costs of, so like for this first one here, football, that's the combined cost of law and foreign for football. In this next slide here, we simply take the total cost and we divide by the total number of students, and we give an approximate number of how much it would be cost per student by sport. Look through that number there and see the average number. In this next slide here, we start talking about our two hockey programs. Our first one here is our ice hockey for the boys, which is a co-op. So CIAC permits you to combine players if you are not able to support a team on your own. So our schools have a fluctuating number of students each one of those years, so in order to run a team individually, you would need a certain number of students that you'd have so you could fill the actual ice. As a result, we've been able to have a co-op here. It was established in 1990, and our students come from law, foreign, and Platte Tech. It's an MPS-sponsored one, so it's called the Milford Mariners, and the program is overseen by Mr. Drew at John F. Law. Our general funds pay for coaches, transportation, athletic trainers, and ice time, and the game day operations are really the pieces that are supplemented by our ticket sales. Ice hockey for our girls, which is also a co-op. It was established in 2010. So the history of this, I broke it down just so you have some quick bullets on the history and progression of our ice hockey team for our girls. So it's also a co-op. It was from 2010 to 2020, we partnered with Notre Dame Fairfield for girls' ice hockey. In 2020-21, Notre Dame withdrew as the host of that co-op team. So MPS, based on the number of students that we had at the time, agreed to be the host school for that. It included players from Milford, Notre Dame Fairfield, Weston, and Pomperow. And then in 2021, declining numbers caused the Milford co-op team to dissolve. So then we joined Handen Public Schools for the Handen Green Dragons with their girls' ice hockey team. And the teams that are a part of this co-op team for the 23-24 season are Handen, Milford, Nanawog, Holy Cross, New Haven, and Longford. And MPS plays pays a player participation fee, and we also pay for transportation. And those costs were represented in a few slides earlier. This next slide here just shows the ice hockey co-op participation for Milford. And as you can see, in 2015-16, we had a smaller number, and then as that popularity increased, you can see right around that time is when we decided, okay, well, let's try to host our own, be the host school for that co-op. And then the numbers declined in that following year, which is why we ended up signing up with the Handen Green Dragons. You guys have any questions at this time? Happy to answer.
Did I hear you say at the beginning that cheer is a sport now?
For a CIAC.
I think I missed that. Is it an actual sport starting this year?
Starting this year, yes.
So what season is that considered? Is it like winter?
Winter, be competition season.
So fall, they have sideline cheer, winter is competition season.
Mr. Smith?
On page 14, the expense of a sport, I think there is a error on the formula because the all-sport total is $108,000, which when football is $192,000. The bottom, the bottom left of column one.
Page 14.
Yeah, page 14. The all-sports.
So that's expenses.
Oh, so all sports is not.
It's not a total?
No, it's not.
Okay.
So that's that's its own piece.
Okay.
That would be expenses that are attributed to like Band-Aids.
Gotcha, okay.
Wrap it, ice.
That makes more sense.
Yes.
I was like, all these other things add up. I think there's an error, okay.
No, so it's all the things that would typically be used of all sports. Bandages, Band-Aids, all those different kinds of supplies that.
Gotcha, like miscellaneous things.
Yes.
Okay, cool, thank you.
I'm scared.
That's why I was like, this doesn't usually happen.
This would usually typically be the things used by the athletic trainers?
Yes.
Because we've internalized athletic trainers now, right? Instead of doing that, and how has that process worked?
In terms, the process has worked well. It's nice to have our dedicated athletic trainers for our buildings. They work very closely with our athletic directors. There's a relationship that's built on that, and then, you know, knowing that you have a consistent person also helps develop some of those expectations and keeps a clear streamlined communication. You know, we stay in regular touch about that. I don't know if there's anything you guys wanted to add about that, but I think it's definitely a benefit that we have an athletic trainer on staff full time.
And that's great for the families because they they build that relationship with the trainer and, you know, they're trusting their children, you know, with medical advice if something were to happen. So it's huge that they're there every single day.
Yeah, I've seen my nephew with his shoulder a few times in the ice. On the slide above that Mr. Smith had just described, so these are the totals here, and...
13?
13. Thank you for the great presentation, but so we've been having a conversation about our long-term facilities, long-term facilities planning, and one point of contention and discussion has been this idea that students would be boxed out from participating in sports if there are, is one combined school. If we made that the, if that happens, I'm not putting anything in in place that says that's occurring, but I'm just asking that question. Is there still the opportunity for students across the district with essentially the same number of students for the next decade to participate in, for example, girls' basketball? 38 students between two high schools. I'm assuming that's not a freshman JV and a varsity team at each school.
Foreign did not have enough for freshman team in the past three years. We have a JV varsity team in softball.
Yeah, so there is opportunity for students still that exists, that we could expand opportunities even with similarly budgeted in that, in those opportunities if they were so wanted to.
Yes, and I think it's also a good opportunity for possible intramural teams. We talked a little bit about that, where, you know, it gives other opportunities. Maybe it's not, you know, the actual wrapped sport, but there's an opportunity for our students to engage in some other kind of opportunity.
Like dodgeball and kickball. We see those, yes. But no, that's great because that also plays to some of this idea of middle school sports because that's never a conversation that we've really been able to have, but it's something that's been ongoing that we have a desire for to build that. I mean, you look at girls' hockey team, that may not be the sport that we choose for intramurals, but to build the playing field is a is a good idea. Thank you, that's it.
Just to play off of that, so on that same slide for slide 13, so which of these sports have JV teams?
All the sports have JV teams.
Okay.
Yeah, all 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 law sports have JV teams.
Yeah, the only, we have all JV teams as well, foreign.
But they don't all have freshmen?
The only freshman sports foreign did not have was girls' basketball and softball.
It's easier to say the sports that do have freshmen. It's baseball, boys' basketball for us, and football. Yeah.
Thanks. Sorry, which were the ones that had freshman teams again?
For foreign, football, basketball, baseball, all boys' sports.
Not the girls, just the boys, yeah, okay. And a lot?
Same.
Same?
For football, for law, it's been frosh more the past few years.
Other questions?
So there aren't girls' freshman sports?
We have the opening for it. I can't speak on behalf of last year, this is my first year as athletic director, but this year we had the opening, and there are just more enough girls to try that.
Got it, yep. Thanks.
Can you give an update? Both schools have booster clubs. What's their activities? I remember when my daughter was in school, it was, you know, anything having to do with an individual sport. The parents would come together and do a particular fundraiser for that sport. Can you just give an update on, you know, how's the engagement? How are they doing, you know, with the booster club? I know they they also volunteer for the concession stands, right? Is that also, how is that going? How are the booster clubs?
Our booster club has been fantastic this year. We've we've made some major upgrades with, we got a new scorer's table, which benefits a lot of, almost all our indoor sports. For years, we had an old table that's, I don't know how old it is, but it said, you know, sponsored by Lassie's, and it was just, it was very, actually, it was dangerous. So the booster club got us a brand new one, Skate of the Art, it's a video on it for senior night, the kids' pictures could be on. It was it was really neat and made the atmosphere for all of our indoor sports special. They just purchased a new golf cart for our trainer with a flatbed on the back so we could help tape the kids. So our booster club's been fantastic.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Foreign's as well. We have monthly meetings open to any parent that are a family member that would like to join or be a part of it. We have over 100 families currently this year. They are just fantastic. They help supplement costs if needed. They have helped kind of streamline communication with teams. So each season before we meet, we go over meet the coaches night so we get someone to come in and just, you know, give them the spiel on what they kind of offer for the student athletes and get involved for parents and families to help out. And we have like a team liaison for each sport where that parent helps kind of facilitate the communication to the head coach, so everyone's kind of on the same page. And they've done a really good job of making themselves visible at all athletic events.
I think Milford's very fortunate at all of our levels. I mean, we're talking about the booster club here, but also our PTO and PTAs at the elementary level. We're just fortunate to have a great community of parents who are willing to help out, engage, and try to make sure that our students are getting the most out of it and their children. Really, really fortunate.
That's great to hear, that it's still, you know, solid.
Definitely.
Great, thank you. Mr. Scobie?
A question about esports, kind of looking ahead. I know this, you said this is 23-24, but just looking at, I'm sure you're experiencing this already, but again, this is 23-24. I'm curious if you've kind of explored into options for ticket sales on like an online room rather than, you know, we're building the arenas out. It just seems like a good opportunity to kind of like sell seats to view them remotely. I believe they're being livestreamed on YouTube already, and I don't know how this can work in a like controlled online environment where you're like selling pay-per-view almost. But it seems like a decent way to boost ticket sales because people don't need to, like the weather won't come into play, and you can just kind of pull in more revenue that way. And then I was also, you know, looking at the the support. I know they have coaches, they were here a couple meetings ago, but transportation costs may not be there because if they can play remotely, I don't know if they're playing on a local network or not, but if they are, then obviously the transportation costs come in, but if they're playing, you know, from one city to another, you know, transportation will go down. Athletic trainers, I imagine we probably don't need many for esports. Insurance, I'm sure, is much lower for esports. Equipment and supplies, there's a lot of upfront cost. It just seems like a really good area to tap into because the costs seem lower, and then maybe boost tournaments and things like that, and then somehow figure out how to do pay-per-view tickets. Just seems like a good avenue to tap into.
Definitely a good idea. I think the other piece of it too is, you know, that that element of having people there cheering for you in person, you know, so if it's an online stream, then they're not going to get that same like sharing in the stands type piece as well, so. But definitely a good other option to definitely look into. That's something I don't, I know I personally haven't thought of that online streaming thing, and I'll definitely be speaking with Mr. Giancola about opportunities for that. Thank you for that.
Online streaming for a lot of different sports, for, for instance, like family and friends that are not local.
Exactly, and we do that with our programs right now, so.
Other questions on the athletic report?
Sorry, everyone.
Yep.
On the United Sports, unified, not sorry, United, Unified Sports. I was, I don't see that as funded through, is that funded through us?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's not part of our, it's not part of this athletic portion, but yes. Staffing, supplies, transportation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. I just wanted to, once again, take a moment to thank our athletic directors.
Yes.
Both relatively new in their positions, but they've already made a impact on both of their respective programs, and I constantly am collaborating with them, and their hard work and their definite long hours, definitely say that, are not unnoticed. And we just want to thank you guys for everything that you're doing at our two schools to make sure that our programs are as robust as possible and that our students are getting the best experience. So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next agenda item, public comment. We have one member in the audience that you wish to make comment tonight, and I'll agree to the public comment statement if you do. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about the Milford Education Personnel or any person associated with Milford Public Schools. Security issues and matters relating to negotiations and grievances will not be permitted. Consistent with the principles of the Federal Education Rights and Privacy Act, discussion of students is prohibited absent parental waiver. Public comment does not allow for two-way conversation between speakers and the board, but we welcome and appreciate your comments and opinions, and all will be taken into consideration. Please note our meetings are televised and livestreamed on YouTube. We ask that you state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment tonight is limited to agenda items only, so.
My name's Mary E. Oak, also known as Emmy. I live at 30 Durinah Place here in Milford. I want to say how thrilled I am to hear about the first report tonight, not just for you lot on the board, but also the people oversee it, the teachers, but also the children. I think it's, it's well-reserved right across the board to be acknowledged, and I look forward to improving even further, and I'm thrilled pieces with the news. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Your second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Is there any objection to adjarring at 8:26? Here again, you are adjourned at 8:26. Thank you. Everybody remember, we have a special meeting next month.
Mostly CNC and, you know.